The council will come to order. Please use the e-vote application to record your presence at this time.
The voting is now open. Please use your device. If you need help with your login or password, please raise your hand. If you have an issue with your device, please raise your hand. Voting is now open. I will now call for a voice vote if you have not voted in your e-device. Alderman Hopkins, not present. Alderman King, not present. Alderman Harrison, not present. Alderman Sawyer, not present. Alderman Harris? Alderman Harris is present. Alderman Beal, not present. Alderman Zalowski Garza, present. Alderman Abarka, not present. Alderman Beal? Alderman Beal is now present. Alderman Burke, not present. Alderman Lopez, not present. Oh, Alderman Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman, not present. Alderman David Moore, not present. Alderman Curtis, not present. Alderman O'Shea? Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderman Taylor, not present. Alderman Scott? Alderman Scott, not present. Alderman Maldonado, not present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez? Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is here, present. Alderman Spisato? Alderman Spisato is present. Alderman Nugent? Nugent is present. Alderman Napolitano, not present. Alderman Knudsen? Knudsen is present. Oh, one second. Nugent and Knudsen, present. Knudsen, 43. Not here. Mayor, we have a quorum.
There are 37 members present. We have a quorum. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands on its basis. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered today by Dr. Damian Miguel Epps, Senior Pastor of Mount Calvary Baptist Church. Pastor, the floor is yours.
Greetings, Your Honor, and to all of the elected officials. Let us bow in a word of prayer. Most holy, wise, and sovereign God, we thank you for the blessed privilege to call upon your name. Your name is quick and powerful. Your name is sweeter than honey. Your name is alive and active. Your name is pure and holy. Your name is absolute truth. Your name is so peaceful and so soothing and so master. Even this morning, we say thank you. We thank you, Lord, even now in these chambers. Thank you for your many wonderful and abundant blessings that you bestow on not only personal lives, but even the lives of our citizens in this city and even on this council. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. Thank you for a heavenly calling. Thank you, Lord, for creating us for such a time as this. For such a time as this to serve our country, to serve our city, and to even serve our communities. We thank you for the opportunity and the ability to be involved in useful work that's designed to impact the citizens of Chicago and our various communities that our council represents. Thank you for the freedom to embrace each other in love. Thank you for loving us even when there were times that we didn't even love ourselves. In your word, you've said that citizens should obey the governing authorities. And since you have established those very authorities to promote provision, peace, prosperity, protection, order, and justice, therefore, I pray, even now, for a mayor like foot. I pray for the oncoming mayor that's going to take the reins of leadership. I pray for the various levels of our city officials. I pray for this assemble that's counseled. Here we are once again in this place, not to request for you to bless what we're doing, but our desire at the end of the day is to leave this place doing what you're blessing. And so, master, we pray now for prudence, wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time. We pray for a passion amongst our leadership, a passion for the poor and for those who are less fortunate as we seek the welfare and the true needs of our people. We seek and we pray for protection. Our streets have become so dangerous. And so, we pray, God, for a keen thirst for justice as law enforcement endeavor to work together with entities within our city to keep our streets safe. We pray for partnership, Lord, even between the mayor and the council and between the city and elected officials. Lord, remind us that we're better and stronger together. We pray for personal peace in our lives, provision, and prosperity within the city. I pray, Lord, for the agenda that's set today. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and benefit those who live and work in and around this city. It's in your most precious and powerful name I pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the call of today's special meeting?
The following call for a special meeting of the City Council was filed in my office on Tuesday, March 28, 2023, at 8:28 a.m. Dear Clerk Valencia, we under, we, we, the undersigned hereby called special meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago to be convened at 9:30 a.m. on Thursday, March 30, 2023, in the City Council Chamber and City Hall for the following purposes and no other purpose whatsoever. To consider and vote on pursuant to a suspension of the ruled resolution establishing the rules of order and procedure of the City Council for 2023-2027 term. Direct introduction to the City Council to consider a vote on a resolution establishing City Council Committee Chairs for the 2023-2027 term. Direct introduction to the City Council to consider and vote on a series of reports for Committee on Committee and Rules recommending re-referral to the appropriate committees of 02023-1340 redevelopment agreement for Congress Theater and appointments to the Chicago House Authority, the Chicago Transit Board, the Commission of Landmark, Chicago Landmarks, and the Advisory Council on Special, on Cultural Affairs and Special Events. Very truly yours, Alderman Michelle Harris, Alderman Scott Wagaspack, and Alderman Gilbert Vega.
We will now have public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker today is Jane Ruby.
Good morning. I am here today on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Chicago to urge you to reject both the proposal to suspend its rules in order to consider and vote on the rules of order and procedure of the City Council for the 2023 through 2027 term and the proposal to establish City Council Committee Chairs for the new 2023-2027 council that has yet taken office. We believe that the results of our elections should matter and that the will of the voters should determine how we are governed. That is why the rules governing the City Council of 2023 and through 2027, including selection of its committee chair, should be decided by the members of the City Council of 2023 through 2027. For the outgoing council to usurp the authority of the incoming council, which has a fresh mandate from the people, is antithetical to the basic principles of democracy. The League firmly believes that the public, along with the new council members, have a right to see what is being proposed and that the new City Council members should have a say in the matter. This council should refer its proposals to the Rules Committee, where the discussion can begin not only among the existing council members, but also the public. If the City Council wants to assert greater independence and to play a larger role in the governance of Chicago, it should act with integrity and transparency. That is the best way to earn the voters' trust. And that is why this council should respect the new one and allow the next council to vote on its rules and its committee chairs. Rushing the conversation now is a disservice to the people of Chicago. The League has been very proud to work with many of the people in this room to establish and expand voter access and increase electoral fairness. But we cannot be silent when members of this body seek to undermine a basic democratic process, especially now. Today, you have an opportunity to show the world that the City of Chicago has a government that is truly of, by, and for the people of Chicago. We urge you not to squander that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ruby, for your comments. Our next speaker is George Blakemore.
The Women's League of Voters, they are corrupt too. And they're headed by predominantly white women and talking about corruption, fraud, and abuse. This whole system is broken. But you want now these people to be all law-abiding? You want them to be law-abiding? You're not law-abiding. An egregious act has happened in the City of Chicago with you black people. Five of you got together and got rid of Lady Lightfoot. And one of them now wants to become the mayor of this city. I've always voted ever since I was 18 years old. This time, no. No to Brandon Johnson and no to Paul Vowles. The system is broken. And you down here have caused this, especially you black people. You are disgrace to the ancestors. Did you see five Hispanic running against Tua Garcia? No. Did you see five whites running against Paul Vowles? No. You are disgraceful. The ancestors hate you. They're watching you. And you deserve the government you get, and you get the government you deserve. You, why didn't you give Lady Lightfoot another four years? Well, she promised, all of them been promising, promising us 40% of news what they gonna give to us, and we never received it. So it's something wrong with you, black people. You, not the system is broken. All of you are responsible. So I urge my people to do something to hate your enemies. Oh, I don't care what Reverend Woo Woo say. Hate your enemies. It's power in hate. A lot of power. So you get what you deserve. And you, black ones, you deserve what you get. And this little dog and pony show, you all gonna get up and discuss that like you all a mob. You know you can't do this, but do what you wanna do. And you, black people, you got to do what you wanna do. And the first thing you got to do is love you. Love your nappy hair, your big nose, your thick lip, and your black little hand hole. All of you, you can empower you. You can't vote your way off of this plantation. Sit down. Sit down to y'all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Blakemore, for your comments. Our next Brian, our next speaker is Brian Zaroff.
Madam Mayor, City Council, good morning. My name is Brian Zarouf, and I am the Director of Policy at the Better Government Association. The BGA has historically advocated for an independent city council that serves as a co-equal branch of government to the mayor. Council's selection of its own committees and leadership is an important part of that independence, and we are glad to see it under discussion. It's a discussion worth having publicly. Today's proposal to suspend the rules, directly introduce new language, and pass it in the same day denies the public any chance to weigh in on the specifics of the rules and leadership changes. We haven't seen them apart from screenshots drafted and circulated in the media. If council is to stand on its own and independent legislative body, it must be one the public can have faith in. Shortcutting your own rules to introduce and pass things on the same day is a terrible precedent with which to begin a new era in Chicago's political history. Also unable to weigh in are the newly elected members of council and those that's, those that are still in runoffs. Depending on runoff outcome, City Council will have at least 11 and as many as 17 new members in May. Those elected representatives should be involved in the drafting and discussion and debate of council's new rules and appointments. The matters proposed on the agenda for immediate consideration today also have budgetary impacts. Virgins of the proposal seen by the public have included an expansion of the council's committees from 19 to 28. Committee staffing, which cost over $5 million in the current budget, has historically been treated as a perk under the sole discretion of the committee chair. How much more is the public going to spend to staff these new committees? What benefit will the public receive from it? Some of the council's current committees have not met in over a year. Rather than expanding a largely unaccountable body of committee staff, we urge the council to focus on creating a centralized support staff that provides all members with legislative, parliamentary, and financial analysis. An independent legislature deserves a professional staff focused on legislative tasks, not 27 Balkan, 28 Balkanized staffs assisting the individual older persons with both legislative and ward service duties. Today could be the beginning of a deliberative and transparent process to establish an independent legislature, something Chicago hasn't had in far too long. Unfortunately, the agenda presented for today does nothing to inspire public confidence and poses serious questions about council's staff and budget plans. We urge everyone here today to take a deep breath, pause, and slow the process down to give the public and your newly elected colleagues a voice to these historic changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarouf, for your comments. Our next speaker is John Paul. Our next speaker is John Paul Jones. Mr. Jones, are you there?
Press star six to unmute.
Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Includes the public comment period. At Seth Lorth in a letter calling for the special meeting, there are two items. Item C is not before the body. First is a resolution establishing the rules of order and procedure of the City Council for the 2023 to 2027 term. The chair recognizes... At it is for 10 minutes.
Maybe she won't marry him. Just if she marries him, rid him, she's gonna get rid of him. Finally, they're married. He's stupid. Got somebody to take the garbage out of.
The council will come to order. Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. Non-council members, please vacate the floor. When we took our leave, the chair was recognizing Chairman Harris.
Thank you. All members have been provided with a copy of the resolution. I now move to suspend the rules for the immediate consideration of the resolution.
Roll call.
A roll call has been called for the suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk, please call the rule. A yes vote is to suspend the rules to consider the resolution. A no vote is to not suspend the rule.
Voting is now open. Please hit refresh and cast your vote. I will now call on those aldermen who are present in the chambers and ask you for a voice vote. Alderman Hopkins? Voice vote, please. Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderman King? It's going up, okay. Thank you. Alderman King is listed. Alderman Sawyer is not in the chambers. Alderman Alvarca, Alderman Burke, Alderman Coleman, all not in the chambers. Alderman Spazato, would you like to cast a voice vote? Spazato has voted. Alderman Napolitano is not in the chambers. Everyone in the chambers has cast their vote. The vote is now closed.
There are 35 yays and nine nays. Thirty-four votes were needed to suspend the rules. The motion to suspend the rules is affirmed. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion for reconsideration is denied. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Madam President, I move passage of the resolution by a roll call vote.
Madam President.
A roll call vote has been called. The chair recognizes Alderman Bill. I'm clarifying for the record.
Madam President, I am embarrassed to be a Chicagoan today. I am embarrassed to be a Chicagoan today. I've never seen a process to buy votes such as this. I've never seen a process to create 28 committees to buy votes such as today. You all should be embarrassed to call yourselves elected officials to try to ram this through when for four years I've been fighting for independence in this body and you all have blocked every step of the way. I've tried to have our own budget analysis. I've tried to have our own parliamentarian. I've tried to have our own legal department. Nope, we can't do it. Back Alderman Bill's process. Can't do it. But it's okay to create 10 more committees to buy people and then create another $1.2 billion of an unfunded mandate that this is causing. You should be ashamed of yourselves. This is not transparency. This is not independence. This is a corrupt process ran by the same corrupt people who ran the remat process. You ought to be ashamed of yourselves. I'm the only one that finally worked with Alderman Riley to bring a resolution together on a bipartisan basis. We got to where we want it to be, but we still can't bring it to the floor. Anytime the number two seniority person is totally shut out in this city is a problem and then you give somebody who's been here for three months a committee. Really? Really? That's what we're doing in order to buy people? Somebody who just got here still don't know where the bathroom is as a chairman. I don't understand how some of y'all sleep at night. I really don't understand it. I love this city profusely. That's why I fight so hard for what I believe in. I love this city. I couldn't care less about being the chairman. But this process was flawed and you all know it. So when you close your eyes tonight and you look at the back of your eyelid and you say to yourself, "What the hell did I just do?" Good luck sleeping at night. Thank you, Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. From the start, when I got in this council, I believed that this council should have been organized itself. But everybody who, whether from previous mayors to previous mayors, as long as they were getting theirs, they were okay. And so now we get to the point where we can organize ourselves, which me and my caucus stood up for that, pushed it, but wanted to push it in a democratic way. Where everybody, especially the ones who are going to be elected sitting here, get a vote to say, "Hey, you know what? This is who I want my chair to be." And we take a vote on it. Where you land at, you land. Isn't that important? Because you don't do work in your ward that you gotta have a committee to make yourself look good? Is it that serious that you trample over democracy? All I want is democracy. If the people in this city saw how this was done, they'd be protesting all down here right now. If you're willing to show how this process was, open it up to the public. Anything I say, do in private or anything like that, I can do it and say it in public. The people who put this stuff together cannot because it was about self-interest. I don't care what you people think about Alderman Bill or anybody else. But at the end of the day, you do democracy and if you stand up, you vote. If you don't want them, you don't want them. But you give a vote for everybody, whether that's on seniority or if you decide, hey, everybody just put their name in a hat and we want to see who won a committee, then you vote on it. But you don't go behind closed doors and increase it by up to 28 committees. We're in a financial bind as it is. Looking at a ballot, probably a $38 billion deficit. Come on, you all. But it's been done. People are going to do what they want to do because they buy people off and what makes my stomach hurt more than anything is people who want to call themselves progressive. It's progressive when you on your end and fight. But when you get your crap, it ain't no more aggressive anymore. This is ridiculous. But I'm gonna continue to fight for people the way I fight for them? Yeah, I could have had a committee. Yeah, here, take yours, David. We'll buy off. You can't buy me. I ain't got a price. I ain't no prostitute. You gotta stand up for what's right. Stand up for what's right. And then when democracy is lost, then the city is lost. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Tabarez.
Today is an important day for our council and for the city. A year ago, there were two Hispanic women in the city council. Two Hispanic women in the city council. And under this plan, under this proposal that we're discussing today, there's going to be two Latinas chairing committees. That, to me, is progress. That's progress. So I want to thank the chairman of the Latino Caucus, Alderman Viegas. I want to thank the chair of the Black Caucus, Jason Irvin. Want to thank Michelle Harris, chairwoman of Rules and Alderman Waggis Pact, for working on this initiative to ensure that we have representation and diversity. I know that that was not easy. But I want to say that the real, true test is the next chapter where I hope that we can all work collaboratively and, most important, respectfully to ensure that we really address the problems that our city is facing. As we start this next chapter, I want to thank all the women who served on committees. All the women chairs who served on committees, especially Alderman Sue Garza. Because you really set the example on what a strong and fair chairperson should be. So thank you.
The chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in opposition to this action we're taking today and I ask for a no vote. And my comments and my appeal to vote no on this are primarily directed to the members of this body who are leaving service to the city council, retiring after, in some cases, decades of service to this body. I've enjoyed being your colleague and I know many of you are moving on to other things. You're not done serving the public, even though you're done. even though you're done carrying the title of alderman and working in this chamber and the history here. But think back to when you were first elected. Think back to some of the first consequential votes that you took as a rookie alderman, and think how you would feel if someone did to you then what we're about to do now to the eight new incoming members whom we don't know yet, who have yet to be chosen by the voters. You know it's not the right thing to do. And you've served honorably. You've served capably. Don't stain your own legacy by supporting this act today. There's no reason to do it. The question that I have today is not, "Why are we doing this?", it's, "Why are we doing this today?". Has anyone asked that question? "Why are we doing this today, five days before an election? Everything we're doing right now, we could do seven days from now, and it would change the entire context of this." Why are we denying incoming aldermen, who will be selected by the voters of Chicago on April 4th, the opportunity to determine their leadership team and to determine the rules under which they will operate for the next four years? We did some research. Our friends at the Newberry Library helped us. Do you know the last time the Chicago City Council had a special council meeting five days before an election to determine the committee chairs, the leadership structure, and the rules for the following term? Never, ladies and gentlemen. It has never happened in the city's history. This is unprecedented and unfair. Why are we doing this? Why are we doing this today? It's not the right thing to do. I appeal to my outgoing colleagues. Do not support this action today. You know it's not the right thing. Don't go along with it. And I'll tell you what. The reason I'm not appealing to my colleagues on this list... Guys, I get it, all right? I'm not condemning you. I'm not even really criticizing you. We all know what this is, okay? It is what it is. But it's not the right thing to do. And Madam President, to you presiding over this today, I don't know what you must be feeling right now, but you know this isn't right. You know this is not the right thing to do. It has never happened before in the city council. Bathhouse John and Hinky Dick Kenna didn't come up with this. And we're doing it today. If that's the legacy you want, Madam President, if that's the legacy you want, I can only leave you with the words of Pink Floyd. Welcome to the machine.
The chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the time to address my colleagues. I do agree that, you know, presiding over this is a little bit ironic because, you know, throughout the four years, an independent council is not what you were advocating on behalf of. Progress by any means is not progress. Process is super important. Process is very important. A runaround on the process is definitely not progressive. I agree with my colleague, Alderman Moore. As he said, it's not democratic either. And I am super ashamed of members of the Progressive Caucus, who are progressive when they want to be, who are teaming up on behalf of folks who haven't been talking about an independent council so that they can have power for power's sake. 28 committees? We just got 19 or 20, and that was too much. But so that you can have the votes to do what you've been talking about and talking against over the last four years? So you can be progressive when you want to be? Call out progressives when you want to? I'm ashamed. I'm not saying that the body shouldn't be independent. We've had that power forever. Had the power when mayor tried to oust me. We've always had that power. But it's about the process. And this is a jacked-up process, and you all know it. And again, to my progressive colleagues signing on, you know, I reminded Alderman Haddon that her predecessor was the chair of progressivism before he got a what? A committee. And then he wasn't anymore. So what? Power corrupts absolutely? Is that it? You know, the process. Let's have an independent council, but let's talk about how it should run. Let's talk about what it should be so that we can effectively govern in this city. And 28 committees is not it? Backroom deals so that you can get the votes is not it? This is not a democratic process. And I urge my colleagues to stand up against this. Let's do it right. We could do it right. You could be independent. You always had that ability. But now, for whatever reason, you know, it's good for you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this collaborative initiative to make the Chicago City Council an independent, co-equal branch of government. I'm proud to be a part of this historic day. It was a long time in the making, but we fought, but we found the right moment. We came together and seized it. Without the collaboration of most of our colleagues, this could not have happened. We came together as a council in a way we haven't seen in a long time. We came up with a fair and equitable plan that could create the most diverse council leadership and structure in Chicago history. There are a lot of people who never thought we were able to pull this off. I'm happy that we proved them wrong. We proved them wrong because this is our moment. Ask yourself this. If this isn't the right time, then when? When a new mayor enters this building, ladies and gentlemen, it'll be too late. And we all know that. We will have missed our chance. Whoever the new mayor is will have their own competing ordinance to challenge this within the next six weeks. You could almost guarantee it. So let's move forward. Let's build on an open dialogue and transparent process that got us here today. Let's secure the many positive results that will come from working as an independent council. Enacting this change will ensure there isn't just one voice speaking for our entire city. Our new mayor, whoever he may be, will have to interact and engage with each and every one of us. And all of us will be stronger in the work that we want to do for the people of Chicago. This is truly historic. It's a major change for the better. I hope my colleagues will join me in making sure our voices and our priorities are heard with a strong and independent council. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Chairman Waggisback.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise in support of this resolution, two resolutions today. And I'm looking at this monumental day for this city council as something that other legislative bodies throughout the country did a long time ago. And that was make their legislative bodies an independent, co-equal branch of government in their city governments. We're fixing a lot of different things with these rules. As a lot of you know, the rules went out, and we asked for input several times over the last few weeks. We asked for input on the process several times over the last few weeks. The committee resolution is important. With these additional committees, we can bring a new focus to areas that have been sometimes neglected and not gotten the attention that they deserve. For instance, during the post-COVID pandemic, the issue of health and workforce are garnering more importance here and throughout all government institutions. As alderwoman Tabarez said, there is now new and more important input from Latinas on the city council in many ways for the first time ever. Now, some people have argued there are too many committees, but it's not out of the ordinary. If you look at New York City, they have 51 members and 38 committees. And councils throughout the country do this type of work all the time with smaller committees and more legislating, something everyone has asked us to do. But more important than that, we've changed the rules to reflect the needs of the council and the public, asserting independence, as was asked by many of you for years. At least as far back as when I started in 2007, people wanted more independence from the city council and looked for any way to do it through legislation, much legislation which was set aside over the last couple decades. So as we set this up, we held the important discussions required to create that more independent council. We held briefings. We took input from everyone willing to sit down and discuss it. You had to be willing to show up and actually discuss this process. You couldn't sit on the sidelines and say, "Hey, I don't like it because I wasn't invited." Everybody was invited. Everybody was asked for input. To say otherwise is wrong. We've had an encouraging, growing coalition over the last couple of months. We took input from everyone that was, again, willing to sit down. Some of the rule changes include gender-neutral references throughout the rules book. Yes, an increased number of committees that will do the legislative work required of us. Additional transparency and changes in how direct introductions of ordinances can be made and posted, and allowing for electronic dissemination of materials. So the rule changes not only increase the council independence, but also minimize the mayoral influence over the city council deliberations. And I would say that the mayor was not involved in this process. We can provide for increased transparency of the committee business and provide new ways for committees to operate. So I hope that everyone will look at this today, and I hope you will vote in favor of these proposals and know as well that the input from our new members is valued as much as the input from members that exist today. They will be allowed on May 24th and before that to have input into their committee selections and look at these rules and understand them so that they walk in on May 24th, they're not handed a piece of paper by a particular mayor and told, "This is what you're going to get." I appreciate all of the work that everyone put into this. This is the first time this process has been done. Can it be improved? Yes. And I look forward to four years from now when everyone, again, sits at the table and makes this process happen again. I want to thank all the caucus chairs and the members who committed to getting this done. It was a lot of work. It was a lot of hard work, and the choices weren't always great. But this is the first time it's happened, and I appreciate every effort that every one of you put into it. And I ask for your favorable vote today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes alderwoman Nugent.
Thank you, Madam President. I also rise in support of this historic and collaborative initiative. I'm proud to be part of the broad and diverse coalition that has come together today to stand for our independence. I'm proud that we found a process that allows us to move forward in an equitable way. I'm encouraged by the spirit in which most of us have collaborated, and I believe our city should be encouraged by this movement. It shows that we can move forward in a unified way. It shows that while we face a divided city, we don't have to be a divided council. It's time we move forward as a strong and independent council for the benefit of our city, our residents, and each other. These rule changes not only increase council independence, but they also minimize mayoral influence over council decisions and deliberations, provide for increased transparency of committee business, and provide new ways for committees to operate. With our vote today, we can join other legislative bodies across the country as an independent, co-equal branch of city government. I believe this is the right time to do that. Collaboration, consensus, and compromise are part of the governing process. What we hope to demonstrate today is our ability as a council to define pragmatic and responsible rules that will provide for increased transparency. I'm proud to support this historic collaborative initiative. Thank you, Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I don't like to call people out by name usually, but I'm going to call out four people by name. And you four were awesome, which you said. Obviously, I agreed with you. And that's Alderman Beal, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hopkins, and Alderman Sophia King. It's been seven years. I think I agreed with you for the first time in seven years, Sophia. So maybe more to that. Okay, well, just trying to make light of this. So I did vote yes for discussion on this, but this is not something I could support. 28 committees. First of all, I couldn't sleep the last two nights about this because I'm going to end up making enemies over here with some friends. And some people that maybe weren't friends of mine are going to become friends of mine. And I may end up being an outcast. I may end up losing the committee that I have. I'm one of the 28 people. I'm probably the only one of the 28 that's going to speak out against this. But my integrity is too important to me. First of all, 28 committees is way too many. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about that. We have three committees that probably met five times in the last four years. Now we're going to add another 10? I would hope they could meet regularly, and I have faith in a lot of people that are on some of these committees. And it's nothing against them, but I just think 28 committees is way too many. I certainly agree that we need some extra staffers, and I would easily support everybody gets a fourth staffer because I know the challenges we have in our offices, especially for those of us that didn't close our office for a year. You know, we need employees. Some of us have very, very busy offices and, you know. So, but some of the questions were, "Why today?". And I agree with that. "Why today? Why not next week? Why not May 16? Why do we have to do this now?". To me, it's an insult to the incoming aldermen to have no say. I know some of them I saw back here. I know you don't really know what's going on. I think you're put in a really bad spot. But you should have some say about this lineup. And if you did your homework, then it would be an educated decision you would have. I certainly support independence. I believe over my last 12 years, I don't think many people could stand up to me with independence or voting no or standing up for what they thought was right. So, you know, I'm just baffled by this. I just don't understand. I know some people say it wasn't hurried. Some say it was hurried. I'm not sure. I want to keep what I have. I have three employees that I don't want to have to kick them to the curb, but I'm going to roll the dice on this. Can't support this. I do support discussion. I could support it, you know, next Thursday. I could support it May 16. But this is as wrong as wrong could be. And, you know, we have three people that we're giving committees to over here that are in runoffs. We don't even know if they're going to be here or not. How ridiculous is that? I hope you all win. You're all friends of mine, but I hope you all win, but we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, I'm just baffled. I'm embarrassed. I cannot support this. I'm not telling you all what to do, but I will not be supporting this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is really difficult for me because I am absolutely in favor of an independent council. I think that's really, really important. And I'm glad that people are waking up to...
Alderman, please. Alderman Spazato. I respect your right to express yourself. But we do have to, even on a day like today, everything that's going on, we have to have a modicum of decorum. And Alderman Riley, I would ask you, I would... And Alderman Riley, I would ask you, I would, I would. Alderman Spazado, please think about what you're gonna say next. I know you're exercised, but, sir. And I would ask, I know that the feelings are feelings are on razor edge. This is an unprecedented process. But show some respect. You have two more meetings, this one and one more in April. Show a little dignity.
Thank you. Um, look, I, I have no skin in the game, cuz you know, next year, I'm not gonna, next term, I'm not gonna be here, I'm gonna be laying on a beach in Tahiti watching you all go at it. Thank God. Um, I'm all for an independent council. Um, I think that that is something that we should have been doing all along. And regardless of who the mayor is coming in here that sits in that seat, you all need to be independent. And it doesn't matter if the mayor brings an ordinance to, you know, trump what you're doing. Stand up and stand up and be independent. Um, this is really hard for me because there's, there's two different sides here. As a union person, I believe seniority has a say. Um, I always think that that, somebody that's been in this council for twenty-four years should have a say in this, I really do. Um, but that, we're gonna pass this because you guys brought twenty-eight committees, but this isn't the council that's gonna be the council in five days, six days. And I think we're telling the fourteen people that haven't been elected yet that their voice doesn't matter. And that's not an independent council, that's like, okay, we don't care about you. And I have a real problem with that. Um, and I heard a, 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 somebody say, oh, the needs of the council and the needs of the public. Public hasn't been able to weigh in on this. They haven't been able to say anything. Um, and I, you know, another thing, twenty-eight committees, I agree, that's way too many. Where's the money coming from? I've heard four different explanations. It's coming from the grant money that aldermen haven't used. It's coming from the commit, it's coming from the vacant, um, positions that haven't been filled. I, I just, that money could be used for homelessness and housing and things that we've been fighting for for four years that the people that are gonna vote for this have been screaming and yelling about, we could have put that money to good use, not committees that won't ever meet. Um, a strong, united council, we're starting out already by dividing the council because we're leaving out fourteen people. And, you know, I just, I can't vote for this. I voted to have a debate on this. Um, I too, Alderman Spazado, have been up all night worrying about this, and I, I just think that we can wait until Pete, till this election is over, until everybody sits in the seat that will, that's gonna represent the city for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know what it's like to be a freshman in this council, and I kinda understand what's going on in the room. And while I would never want anybody to be excluded, that's the reason why I became an alderperson. I was organized, I still am. And I love that job, cuz at least the people that you work with ain't faking phony and won't smile on your face and then gonna make a deal behind your back. So for me, what was the, why couldn't we wait five days? Um, we've been begging to be independent since I got here, and it ain't happening. And so it's, it's funny to me that now we're changing administration and people have grew some balls. Where was y'all at when we was trying to vote for things to make sure that homelessness, we could help these sixty thousand homeless people that live in our wards? I'mma wait. Where was y'all at when we was voting on marijuana to make sure that the people who are actually impacted and put in jail because of it, we made sure we take care of them, we didn't do that. And so now all of a sudden, there's this urgency for us to be independent, yeah, we could do it in seven days. This is wrong on every level for us not to respect the people that are running. How many y'all been in a runoff? I have, my first term, and it's hard. It's not easy, but to go another month and a half and be in a race and then come back and told this is what the deal is, is not fair to our new coworkers, and we should not be doing this. The thought that Anthony Beal is second, uh, the second member who's been here the longest and he was excluded, says what we think about our coworkers and what we think about seniority, and it's wrong. It's wrong on all levels, and I, you know, speaking out against this goes against what, what some of my coworkers think, and that's okay. I'm, I'm okay with that, we make decisions all the time, but we gotta remember what we do in this council affects those people that we're paid to represent, and I think we forget that. It ain't about us. We gotta take us out of the equation and make sure we're taking care of the people. We haven't had an opportunity to have a real conversation about this, and I'mma be honest, cuz some of y'all won't. Some of those folks who were sitting in these committees, I don't trust as far as I could see them. Cuz you ain't did nothing all these four years I've been here to show me that I trust you. I got coworkers that I never even speak to or never speak to me, but now we wanna be, we, we gonna be independent? Save that for when we start on May sixteen. Let me see where y'all independence is then. Cuz no matter who sits in that seat, we gotta remember, it's fifty of us. Thirty-four votes makes it what, veto-proof? Come on. Now, I'm not a political person, I never wanted to get in politics, this was not my dream. My dream was to have the mega-million numbers or rich hoes, I'll take either. But right now, at this point, us being right by the people in our community is what we should do. Anthony Beal is absolutely right, he has asked for us to have some independence from the very beginning, and I don't know how long he was asking for it before I got here, but literally all these last four years, he's asked for us to have it. And this is not us against the administration, this is about us making sure that we have clarity on our side. Nobody said a word. Wasn't a peep up in here. It got voted down every time, cuz I guess it was about who the messenger was and not the actual message. If we're going to truly be different, seven days ain't gonna hurt us, y'all. It, it's not gonna hurt us, this is the right thing to do, I'mma say that again. It is absolutely right for us to want to organize us as we should, but what I don't wanna see is no matter who in that seat, y'all start doing what y'all always do. So let's keep it real, y'all go make back deals. We all go go talk and see what we could get for ourselves. And that is why we are a city that's in chaos, cuz we make it about us. Y'all know y'all paid to represent people, that's what you pay for. Y'all understand that? Them checks that y'all get every two weeks? This free dental that we get, this health insurance, it comes from the people, and we've ignored them for the most part. We gotta stop doing that, or y'all go, ain't gonna be satisfied, so equity ain't enough. People gonna want revenge, and rightfully so. We gotta do better. And I don't care if my coworkers leaving, they got a right to speak until May sixteenth or fifteenth, whenever it is. They should be able to weigh in and have a conversation too. People deciding not to be on this council, I can't blame them. It's been a circus for four years, and we all look like clowns doing this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Sixchel Lopez.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and I think Alderman Taylor already said most of the things that I wanted to say. But I do, I do want to make sure that we emphasize on principle that it's just simply inappropriate for an outgoing council to decide for a new coming council. Just that simple. But more than that, I do think it is critical because this process started at least when some colleagues shared that this was about independence and that there were conversations happening with the BGA as well as the League of Women Voters. Both organizations who are coming in today to put the brakes on it. And I do believe that do need, the city needs an independent council. No doubt about it. But this council is not going to be independent if we start in this direction. And also, I'd like to say, like Alderman Taylor mentioned, this is certainly not going to happen when this is, this is driven by some chairs that quite frankly have no shown independence. So I second what Alderman Hopkins mentioned. We're okay. We're having this conversation a week from now. Anytime before the next mayor is sworn in, we do have time. But we do have the responsibility to socialize this proposal with our constituents, with organizations that have worked on this matter, and among ourselves directly. No, we power brokers? No, with external forces? Certainly not. But the same private interests that Mr. Michael Sacks, who constantly tries to buy elections. Those are the drivers of these conversations. Machine politics, talking about independence in city council? Hypocritical. So we ask is that the council starts by considering even proposals. The Alderman Beal moved forward to have an independent parliamentarian, for instance. We asked that we start by showing the real collaboration with our constituents, with our communities, and then among ourselves. But to rush this five days before an election will send a bad message to a city that is already struggling. And is struggling because of the lack of independence for four years. And it's not going to be changed by doing this five year, five days before an election. I do ask our colleagues, discuss this matter. But let's do so when it's appropriate. Let's start by showing independence and integrity by listening to our constituents who demand that the council not only is independent, but shows integrity in their decisions. So again, I am in support of having this conversation. Having this conversation after the next mayor-elect is decided next week. So again, I urge my colleagues to, for once, in these last four years, do the right thing. Let's have this proposal discussed, socialized, and then voted on when it's appropriate. So again, this is not about self-preservation or the time to look up for self-interest. This is the time to look for the public good, for the best interest of the city of Chicago. And that means that we should put this on hold and vote it on when it's appropriate, maybe a week from now, two weeks from now. But certainly today is not the time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I really appreciate the discussion um, that we're having today. I'm supporting this, and to be clear, I'd support it if I didn't have a chair and there were fewer committees. I didn't support it two weeks ago or three weeks ago, though I really liked the idea. I ran for council and my community sent me here, um, because one of my goals was council independence. You guys know I'm not from Chicago, though my twenty-year anniversary is next year, so I expect some kind of um, uh, pass, past the twenty-year mark, I hope. Um, the Chicago City Council hasn't been independent for a very long time. And so I very much respect, um, and appreciate the comments of a lot of the colleagues who, who aren't supporting this because you don't think it's the right way. I appreciate that. And I think that the real variety of differences of opinions and, and positions that we're hearing today is actually one of the reasons why this is going to work. We're independent. Chicago is diverse, our opinions are diverse, and we're in a very unique position where no matter who you're supporting for mayor, um, we've got a flawed election system, we should be doing ranked choice voting, right? But we're being pushed into using the system that we've got. I agree with, uh, my colleague Alderman Quinn. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do this after the mayoral election, we just wouldn't. And for, for those of my colleagues here saying and wishing and hoping that we would be good enough to do that, I appreciate the idealism um, and the optimism, but you know it would not happen. The, the mayor, the office of the mayor holds so much power and has held so much power. I studied this in school, I wrote like a whole graduate paper on, on corruption in Illinois and Chicago government. And the dynamics of a city council that has all the imbued authority on paper to do this, but for some reason never does it to sit through here, um, so, you know, Jeanette and Byron, to sit here for almost four years and watch people strive for independence and to have so many of my more senior colleagues not support it, right, is, is challenging. And it's complicated. It's not just because they're with the mayor, it's not just because of whatever. Being in this body has, has taught me a lot about the complexity of people's decisions. But one of the reasons I'm supporting this is because however the effort started, it's ended in probably the best way possible. There are some people who say they've been excluded, they haven't been excluded. Unfortunately, people have to agree with you in order for you to get what you want. And if you can't work with others to find some general agreement, you're not gonna get what you want. And that is just the way a legislative body works, and it is messy because democracy is messy. It, it just is. Um, I hope we have enough votes to pass this, I believe we do. And one of the things that I really hope for us, where maybe I'm being a bit idealistic, is that this also lasts beyond April fourth. That's gonna be our real challenge, right? We're coming together now because there is a little bit of space for us to be independent. This council, um, not just the people sitting in this body now, but this council over decades has not been able to be independent because it hasn't had enough will. Because of these unique circumstances, an outgoing mayor, a mayor-elect not yet decided two very, um, different candidates, that this is a very unique opportunity, and so I appreciate, um, our friends from the League of Women Voters, from BGA, from my colleagues who feel like this isn't the right way. Most of what we do here is done in an imperfect way. Um, we don't get to wait until we have the exact right conditions. We don't get to do things, um, uh, to perfection. And that is a challenging thing about being in this body and operating in a democracy. But I appreciate, um, our colleagues who started this conversation. I appreciate our colleagues who fought to be part of the conversation. And I appreciate people expressing their opinions, and I hope that we can continue the spirit of open deliberation, of respecting each other's differences as we move forward, because this is the work, and these are the challenges we're gonna have to face moving forward. So, thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Good morning, Madam President and members of the city council. I rise in absolute opposition to this, to these resolutions presented today. And I want to first go on record and say that I am not, not in opposition to an independent council. I think I've shown exactly what an independent alderman can look like in this body. And I'm not even a chairman. You don't need to be a chairman. You don't need to have additional staff, you don't need to have some paper title to be independent. Because the only thing that requires you to be independent is for you to act like the alderman you were elected to act as. Now, plenty have said about what it's been like over the past four years. And I know probably more than anybody how difficult it can be to be off on that island of independence. It's easier to be a part of the go-along, get-along gang than it is to stand up and say what's right. I also know that this body has skipped doing what's right. Not only in general meetings, not only in general meetings, but in special meetings, where we have called six different special council meetings, where many in this room who are clamoring for independence today have said it's a stunt, it's a joke, it's just for the newspapers. When we were calling for the National Guard in 2020 after what happened to this city, we were told it was a stunt. When we were calling for Anjanet Young, for the Law Department to stop harassing her, we were ostracized for that. When we wanted our superintendent to stand right there in the well of this body, many here said it was just for show, even though we were on the upswing of one of the most violent summers in the city of Chicago. We've called for special meetings for remap that went answered, bringing home Chicago, which many of my progressive colleagues wanted to see a special meeting happen so that you could address homelessness in this city. Went nowhere. And of course, we met to try to address COVID and the restrictions and all of the issues that were putting our essential workers out onto the street. Time and time again, this body had the opportunity, the duty, to be independent and failed. And that was with 19 chairmen. Nineteen of you are leaders of this body and failed every single time. Now I'm supposed to believe that 28 of you all are going to be better? Of committees that never meet, committees that are bloated in terms of their budget, committees that we don't even know if the staff, many of whom are here, are trained specifically for the tasks that those committees are meant to do. And I know the staff that are here do great work for their committees, but there's a difference between doing great work and being a professional at it, being someone who's trained to do that. And when you have committees that have 300, 400, 500, $1.1 million budgets, and now we're going to up that to six and a half or more, committees that have never met, like education, committees like work for, excuse me, like immigrant and refugee rights, which was created in the last year and during the biggest influx of asylum seekers, refugees, and undocumented individuals coming to this city, couldn't be bothered to figure out what to do. Public safety for four years. Our city under attack twice, looted and rioted. The continuation of an 11-year murder streak that has gone unabated, not just by this administration, but by the last one too. We could not come together to hold these things before the public body. And now we're going to do more? Now we're magically going to stand up and say, we are going to hold the next mayor's feet to the fire? I don't believe it. Taxpayers don't believe it. Stakeholders don't believe it. And it's easy to write off industry stakeholders because they're the big bad guys. But what about the good government ones too, who don't believe us either? And let's not forget, it's not just 14 new members, 30% of this body is going to be different in a month. You are thumbing your nose to them, saying their opinion doesn't matter. 30% of the new people sitting next to you don't matter. Because we don't have the patience to wait to see what their thoughts are, to see what they want to be a part of. You want an independent council, then start with the next one that is newly elected. That's going to be the biggest breath of fresh air in a generation into this room. But we're not going to do that. We're going to put forward proposals hidden behind, oh, we'll do you 48 hours advance notice for direct introduction, but by the way, we're going to do this nonsense so that people can have the first taste of power that they've ever had. And the assumption is this, the greatest fallacy of all of this is that somehow this is an independent council because 28 of you all are in cahoots. What do you all agree on? What's going to be your 28% lock? Are all of you going to stand up for reparations for African-Americans, all 28 of you? Are all 28 of you going to stand up for LGBT inclusion in the WB MBE program? Are all of you going to stand up, all 28 of you, and say that you're all for just cause? That you're all for rent control? That you're all for affordable housing in every neighborhood? You mean to tell me you're the new voting block? The moment any one of those things happen, your cohesion is going to snap like a twig. And the truth about what's going on here will be revealed. That this is not about an independent council. This is not about showing strength through unity. This is not about bringing people together. This is about your own selfish interests and figuring out how to get two damn employees to your name. That's all this is. And I wish you would just be honest about that. Because everything I've heard about, oh, we welcomed you in, we did this, we did that. My family raised me to smell BS a mile away. And that is the biggest load I've ever seen. Because I've been asking both in writing and in person to be involved in this process. The day you guys passed this around March 15th, it went here, it went here, and somehow managed to skip this location. I can't imagine why. You have concocted a plan that secures 28 of you. The best of the best of the most scandalous of councils could never have conspired what you have done or trying to do today. Verdolliak would be proud of you right now. And the problem is this. All of this is because you are trying to subvert the next mayor. Regardless who it is, whether you're for Brandon, whether you're for Paul, you are only for yourself. Because you're not trying to work with whomever that is. Whomever you say you're standing behind, you are trying to put that person behind the eight ball of a dysfunctional body, and you're going to set them up for failure, whoever that is. I don't care if it's Paul or Brandon. For the top, for the purposes of this conversation, you are setting that person up for failure. Because there are folks in here who are going to be named to leadership, who have absolutely zero in common with the next administration. You're going to stand up for what they want? You're going to support their vision? Or are you just going to become a body of obstructionist? I can't wait to see it. Because I know that for all of you who have all kinds of wonderful, colorful, dynamic phrases to apply to me, when I try to just stand up and hold, it was me and Anthony and a small handful of others trying to stand up and call a spade a spade for the last four years, and we were ostracized for it? You think you're going to do that in the next administration? When you haven't even been able to stand up, even with training reels up to this point? Madam President, this is outrageous. This is an affront to democracy. It's an insult to our members, and it's a disgusting way of government unlike the city has ever seen before. And I urge everyone, as all of my colleagues before me have said, you don't need to do this now. Say no. Do this when the new members are here and show them what it means to be a part of a truly deliberative and independent council. Let them have a say in what they want to see, and then we'll see how much you enjoy independence then. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis. No. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. I have been sitting here for the past hour and a half, listening to words being thrown around like independent, transparent, collaborative, a process, responsible. And it's a shame that some of you all who were just re-elected a couple of weeks are sitting back in your seats because you got four more years and can't nobody do nothing. I hope the people will remember. This process was easy because you all did what was in your best interest. It was easy because you excluded people. That's why it was easy. You're trying to hamstring the next city council. You talk about independence, and you're asking for more independence. Well, as somebody that has been on this council for 24 years and from the historically independent fifth ward, Leon Dupre, Larry Bloom, Leslie Hairston, ain't none of y'all in here stood up with me. When I took office 24 years ago, it was machine rule. I survived machine rule. I survived HDO and every administration afterwards, and I was the only one. So when you're talking about what has happened, know your history. Learn your history. You talk about there was no will. There was will, but there weren't the people. I was the people. Tony Preckwinkle was the people. Helen Schiller was the people. Fredrina Lyle was the people. Do your homework. Talking about there's no will, don't you patronize me? We talk about serving the public. How many of us got in office because we wanted to make our communities better? How does this right here make our communities better? How are you going to pay for this? How are you going to pay for this? Better yet, no, how are the taxpayers going to pay for this? How are the taxpayers going to pay for this? Y'all can't even make it to the 19 city committees we have now. Y'all don't show up, and you're going to expand it to 28? Who's going to pay for that? And how does the public benefit? You take their tax dollars to increase your staff. Does it reduce crime? Will it reduce violence? Will it reduce the carjackings? Where will this money come from? Will it help to fund the pensions? I don't think so. And those of you that were progressive yesterday, and then today you've lost your progressive credentials, you've lost your voice. Some of you do that when you become chairs and you work against independence. You need to start serving the public and stop serving yourselves.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. I think I join the chorus, and most of us here today, that applaud the members that had made the decision to exert independence. With that, I have questions. And Alderman Harrison started off with some of the questions. One of the things that I thought that we should know about is the cost of this. You know, when we're adding from 19 to 28, we're establishing committees and maybe even subcommittees. Then I look at some of the committees that I think just from a cursory view could be combined in some efficiencies. Oftentimes, we have committees here that have oversight over two, sometimes three departments, which is okay and customary. We seem to have a committee almost at every department, which I think is wasteful sometimes. So I understand and I agree with the independence and the necessity of doing it. I do question the timing of it and the abruptness, because I think this needs more discussion and more deliberation. Not that I disagree with it, I just think it needs more. Madam President, you know, we sat in a room for days going line by line, word for word, in a public safety agenda. That's how important I think, when we talk about legislation, we should go through it line by line, word for word, making sure that what we do is in the interest of the public and making sure that we're properly representing them. I don't know if this has been done to that level of detail. I was coming in this room in the interest of supporting this. I don't know where I am as of standing right now. I'm going to continue to listen to everyone here today. But I think that at a minimum, more work needs to be done on this to make it where it all makes sense and make it work for everyone in the city of Chicago. And I was hoping that we can just take a breath and really dive into this and find out what we can do to make it better and not rush this process. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Sawyer. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you so much, Madam President. No emotions are high today. It's scary when you do something that's never been done before, when you step into the unknown. For many decades now, in fact, my entire life has always fallen to the mayor to select behind closed doors who will chair committees. When I came here in 2015, I arrived at the first meeting of the City Council, was handed a list. All of the committees that I had requested to serve on as a freshman, I didn't get any of them. I was not consulted as to who would be the chair of any committee whatsoever. And it passed with flying colors. In 2019, after the change of another mayor, the third in my lifetime, the same happened again. We're entering uncharted territory today, and that can be scary. Emotions can run high. But I want to thank Chairwoman Michelle Harris for having the courage. I want to thank Chairman Scott Wagasback for having the courage. I want to thank Chairwoman Pat Dowell for having the courage, Chairman Jason Irvin for having the courage, Chairman Gil Villegas for having the courage to say, maybe we can figure this out on our own. Maybe we can come together and have a conversation about what an independent city council could look like. And at first I had serious questions and concerns. I had concerns about the process. And I got together with 11 of my returning colleagues, and we sent a letter that said, if we're going to do this, we suggest a working group of alderpeople that represent the major caucuses of the City Council, the Black Caucus, the Latino Caucus, the Progressive Caucus, that reflects the ideology and the diversity of the City Council regionally, racially. And we got together as that group. Five valid supporters, five Brandon supporters, representatives from the Black Caucus, representatives from the Latino Caucus, representatives from the Progressive Caucus, white alderpeople, Northsiders, Southsiders, Westsiders. And we sat down and we had a conversation. And out of that conversation came the document before us today. If you're going to organize a city council, I don't know how else you would do it other than sitting down, talking, and compromising and meeting each other as equals. There are pieces of this that I'm not too jazzed about. There are some things that I wanted that were not included here. But I think that this is an important first step towards council independence. You know, the other day I was at a event, a women in labor event. And my colleague Rosana Rodriguez spoke about her first day here. And she told a story about how, when she got here, someone in this room said, finally, something good to look at. We have problems as a body, y'all. We have problems as a city. But what I like about this proposal is that if this passes, and should it stick on May 15th, that person will have to call her Health Committee Chairwoman, Rosana Rodriguez, moving forward. And the issue that she has been championing, treatment not trauma, the work that she has been doing to ensure the Department of Family Support Services is more responsive and dealing with the migrant crisis in our city well, to make sure that we have a Chicago Department of Public Health, this woman, this Latina, will be empowered to have an even bigger say in the important issues that are impacting our community. This proposal here today, while it is not perfect, is the most diverse council leadership structure in the history of this city. I know there's some people that don't want that. It seems like based upon some of the folks that have been speaking up today, perhaps there's a mayoral candidate who says he supports independence, but wants it to be the way that it's always been. We have an opportunity here to take a step in the right direction. And I want to make something clear, because I know there are some questions. This still has to be voted on after May 15th. By law, this vote today is in essence symbolic. It's in essence us saying, we think we should take this step in the right direction. It's in essence us saying, we think we should take this step in the right direction. On May 15th, the council that is seated, whoever wins the runoffs, they will have to vote on this again, and that is when the real vote will happen. So every single member of this body from 2023 to 2027 will have a real opportunity to have their say. And I'm really proud that this proposal does not include any committee membership lists. Why is that important? Well, I don't think anyone here thinks that a freshman is going to be a chairman, despite the fact that I really like both of these two men here, believe it or not. I don't think that anyone expects that freshmen entering this body will be chairs. So I think it's appropriate for us as returning members to decide our committee chairmanships today. But if we had voted on committee membership makeup, then the people that are currently here would choose the best committee for themselves. And the only thing that would be left to the freshmen would be the committees that nobody else wanted that was returning. We worked through this process to make sure that that was not the case. And that means that incoming freshmen like Jesse Fuentes, like Julia Ramirez, like Bennett Lawson, like Bill Conway, my soon to be seatmate, they will have an opportunity to have a real say and make sure that they are able to serve on committees of substance that they have interest in. So I think this is a fair process. I think it's a collaborative process. And again, I want to thank everyone that worked hard to get this here. I don't agree with some of the people that worked on this on everything. We know that. But what I do know at the end of the day is that we all care deeply about this city. We all ran for office because we care deeply about our communities. We all show up and do this work, including my colleague Andre Vasquez, who had to cancel a 10 year anniversary event to be here today. We all show up because we care deeply about our communities. And I think that this is a step that shows that we're willing to move forward in a new direction as this city council. And one last thing on the number of committees. New York City Council has 51 council members and they have 35 committees. There have been so many times when I have approached the chair and said, hey, I'd like a hearing on this matter. And they say, I'm so sorry, I can't accommodate you for three months, four months, five months, six months. Because I've got so many issues in the pipeline. And so when you have a limited number of committees, things get bottlenecked. Things fall through the cracks because we don't have enough avenues to have places for legislation to be heard. So I commend everyone that supports this. I commend everyone that worked to get us here. And I hope that we move in the right direction today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other members that have not spoken that wish to speak to this man? Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. No, I been here for a minute. And I've seen a lot of things. I've seen a lot of different characteristics in this council. I've seen some of them change. You know, I've heard a bunch of different things in this council and I've heard some of those things change. You know, one of the things, one of the, the most important thing that I want to say, we should not over generalize our labels of each other. Because when you say something about the rest of us, you say something about all of us. When they print it in the paper, they're going to call us all corrupt. They're going to call us all prostitutes. They're going to call us all of those negative things that we said about each other. It's a reflection on all of us. You know, so we just got to be careful with our rhetoric when we talk about each other in, in, in this council. I mean, some things we can just, you know, we can kick it with each other one on one and talk about it. But when we talk about each other here, we got to be careful because, you know, folks always try to put a negative connotation with our title. And, and, and a lot of times it's not fair. And it's even less fair when we do it to each other. So I just wanted to say that. You know, it's interesting being in this council, you get to see, being here going on 28 years next month or two, when we get sworn in, you get to see a lot of different things change. You know, things that you thought would stay the same, don't. You have to embrace change. You know, when they first brought this to me, I kind of felt some kind of way, you know, because I've been here for a long time. And I'm used to the mayor making the appointments and all of those things. Can't say I'm used to, I can't say that I used to be used to seniority, but I saw that change. I didn't see that change in this term. I saw that change a long time ago. I saw that change when Ica Rogers came in as a freshman and became the chair of Police and Fire. I saw that change when Michelle came in and got a committee real quick. You know, I saw that change when Wagasback got Finance Committee. You know, I mean, you see a lot of changes. And you try to embrace them. And you know, when we talk about each other having independence, I think we're all independent in our own way. Some of us just don't voice it or express it like other folks do. I, I, I'll just give you an example. You know, when I first came to this council, somebody pulled me to the side. White guy, white alderman. He said, look, man, don't get in that Black Caucus. Whatever you do, don't get in that Black Caucus. I went straight to the Black Caucus because he said that to me. But I'm gonna tell you, and they were real tight with the mayor at that time. And I'm gonna tell you that, that just shifts me the other way because you don't tell me what to do, right? So, but all of us are independent in our own way. And you cannot judge people's independence based on what you say or what you do because we all are independent individuals. And we all get here because we get elected by the people in our wards. And, and, and those are the folks who elect us. Nobody else elect us, nobody else, you know, the mayor, nobody else are the ones who helped us to get here. You know, we independent, man, in, in our own way. And we all have different independence. So, you know, then I, you know, I, I look at, I think about when I had to challenge Mayor Daley about the Affordable Housing Ordinance. And we sat on the floor, me and him had a dialogue right here on the floor, right here on the floor, me and him. He's trying to make me sit down and shut up. I wouldn't sit down and shut up. I kept talking, kept talking, kept talking. He stood up for me to sit down. I kept talking because it was something that I believed in. But you know, the thing is, right after that, I, you know, I was like, okay, I messed up my chance to get a committee, right? Because the mayor, right after that, the next term came, I'm like, I know I'm not going to get a committee because me and the mayor had it out on the floor. Well, the mayor gave me a committee, right? And, and then the next election, Rahm Emanuel ran. Some of y'all may remember this, I was the chairman of the Black Caucus. Right? Y'all remember we used to have all those meetings trying to find a black, black mayor? And I held all those meetings all over the city trying to find a black mayor. We couldn't find one. Some folks made themselves the, the person. But, you know, so I didn't feel right at that time endorsing Rahm Emanuel for mayor. Because I, I felt that would be disingenuous of me as being the chairman of the Black Caucus, doing all these sessions, looking for a black mayor to endorse him. So I just stayed out of it. My organization and Jesse White endorsed him, but I did not. I don't know if people recognize that or not. So I thought when I, you know, when the next term came, that Rahm Emanuel wasn't going to give me a committee. He gave me my committee and I kept my committee and I was appreciative, right? Well, same thing happened with this administration. I worked for Tony Printwinkle. I worked hard. Tony was my colleague. Her and I fought for affordable housing together in this council. I remember she was independent. She never had a committee. Why this is kept? You know, just like this brother here. Just like this brother here, he never had a committee. He'd been here longer than most people here. This sister here never had a committee. She'd been here longer than most people here. Tony Printwinkle never had a committee. And I stood up with her. Mary Lightfoot got in. And we had a conversation. And, you know, I thought I wasn't going to keep my committee. She let me keep my committee. You know, so, you know, you know, I come from where you respect the title, right? And I, and I respected the title and tried to work with the administration on the best behalf of the city of Chicago. And, but I've seen a lot of changes. So now, you know, so I was thinking about that independence stuff. And, you know, this stuff really, really came to be from Matt Martin and Sophia King, right? So Matt Martin wanted the Ethics Committee. So he put it in, we all didn't go for it. Sophia King, because she was Vice Chair of Education, she wanted Education Committee, where it didn't happen. So this stuff was started by, by the progressive folks. You know, Carlos Rosa was talking to me early on about, he said, hey, man, at the election, man, let's talk because, you know, we need to. And I'm like thinking to myself, come on, man, get out of here, you know? That ain't going to work, you know? But things change. Things change. And one of the things that I've learned from being in this council and, and, and seeing how everything changed over time, just like the telephones and the computers and all this stuff, we had to adapt, right? We have to adapt. And this does give us an opportunity to be independent. No matter who the new mayor will be. You know, and so that's why I decided to, to go along with this. Now, granted, things can change after the, after we get sworn in and the new mayor come, some things can change. But guys, this is an opportunity for us to stand up. This is an opportunity for us to be a part of the change that's coming. And this is an opportunity for us to adapt and take our rightful place as aldermen. So I support this. I think, and, and I want to say this, I think we need not get personal with each other. I think that's unnecessary. You know, this is all business, this is not personal. And we all need to, as we learned in the Young Democrats, Michelle and Sawyer and Howard, all of us as in the Young Democrats. And one of the main things we used to say at our meetings, because we used to have it out, being young people and full of energy. We used to say, hey, man, we got to agree to disagree. We have to agree to disagree, have our debates and, and differences, but still come back to the table. And you know, I tell you, people evolve. You know, a lot of those people I seen come in this council that was very so-called independent, like Tony Printwinkle, now she's the chairman of the Democratic Party. You know, I mean, I, I saw Dorothy Tillman be so independent, became Daley's best person. I've seen, you know, Louis Gutz Harris and, and Chewie be so independent, become like the head of the, you know, party now, you know? I mean, you see people grow and evolve and folks change. So I wouldn't take anybody's character personally. I, I, I just look at everybody as they do mutate or, or grow. And, and I just expect, expect, you know, that eventually folks are going to change and have different, different concerns in reference to some of their policies as, as life goes on. So guys, let's do this. Let's do what we have to do. And let's see how things happen in the future. And let's not take it personal. I, I will tell you, I did feel some kind of way for Anthony Beal because I'm like, how could I expect, expect people to, to respect me for my seniority when he has seniority? Even though, you know, I don't have a top spot, you know? I'm cool where I am, you know? And, and I know folks think some of these committees don't do anything, you know? And, and, and I, I look at some of these committees like running a marathon. You know, when I trained for a marathon, I, I ran a couple of marathons. I had to run over 100 miles to prepare for it. And then I run a race for 26 miles. Well, some of you all don't know what's in the back of doing these committees. Like for instance, in my committee, I know a lot of folks, I know my committee go for 10 minutes or 15 minutes, but always have a stack of papers like this. Me and my staff had to work on all those signs and loading zones and all those things that everybody want, converse with some of the aldermen, talk to the Transportation Department, talk to the Law Department and talk to the mayor's office in order to make these things happen. And a lot of these different committees have to do those things. So sometimes you don't see what happened on the back end to prepare for the 26 mile race. So I stand in support of this ordinance. Thank you very much, and I hope the rest of you all vote on it too. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Today I was just want to say thank you to everybody who has worked to get us to this point. And there, two of our colleagues have to leave and go to events. I renew my motion to, uh, passage on the resolution establishing the 2023 to 27 rules of order by roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
The voting is now open. Please cast your vote. The voting is now open. If you have any issues with your login or your device, please raise your hand. The voting is now open. I will now take a voice vote for anyone that has not voted. Alderman Garza, not here. Alderman Tunny, not here. The voting is now closed.
Are the yeas are 34, the nays are 10. Alderman Kapimun on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Harris.
I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up is a reg- resolution establishing city council committee chairs for the 2020. For the 2023, 2027 term. Chairman Harris.
All members have been provided with a copy of a resolution. I think we all spoke to it already. So I'd like to call for a roll call vote.
Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Madam President, I would like to ask Corporation Council if it's legal to designate chairman before the new council is even seated, to name chairman for a term that has not even started.
Answer is yes. The council can change its rules at any point. By calling for a special meeting, making sure the rules, the normal rules are suspended, which is what procedure has been followed today, and by having a vote. Your, the existing rules provide for exactly what has transpired today.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that for me, Madam President?
I said that the existing rules allow for the city council to change its rules at any point.
Well, I understand that, but I'm asking for a legal opinion if this body can vote on chairman before a new council is seated.
Well, and I think I've answered your question, but I will say it one more time. Existing rules allow for the council to change its rules at any time with appropriate notice, making sure that the notice is compliant with the State Open Meetings Act. This council, this special city council meeting was noticed, it was posted. And thus far, we're not finished yet. But thus far, what has transpired based upon our analysis is consistent with the open meetings rule. is consistent with the Open Meetings Rule Act, the state law, and this city council's rules. I believe that we have a request for a roll call vote. Please call the roll. I'm sorry, the chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. As we get to this part and speak on this, and let me be candid about this, as we get to these committee assignments. Never in any body that I've seen, especially this city council body, and this is towards the Black Caucus, because I always said it and I'll say it again, when black people win, everybody benefits. I've been unapologetic about that. And I've worked with everyone. But never have I seen in this city council, ever since I was 11 years old watching it, that when we have the majority, we give up our power. We have 20 members, many are in seniority. So however you do it, you don't give up your power, and that's what happened here. Number, the other part is, you must show how things are done and tell the public. Now, if you're saying, hey, we doing it on seniority, do it on seniority. If you're saying you're doing it on color, do it on color. But don't get behind closed doors and do it the way you want to do for your benefit. But at the end of the day, we gave up our power, and I want Black Chicago to know that. And it's ridiculous. 20 votes we have in this council. 20 votes. And we walked away and gave up. Nobody else would have came and said, hey, let's work together, let's do this. But like Alderman Lopez said, hey, it's just, it's gonna, one day it's gonna be another way. And another way is based on seniority. And you don't give that seniority up. And that's what we failed to do in aligning these committees. It's not about a person getting a committee. It's about democracy. Cannot stress that enough. So this, again, cannot support, cannot support. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes. I saw you. No, 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 Alderman Hopkins. I see you. I will call upon you, but I'm calling on people in order as I normally do. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazada.
I just want to piggyback on my esteemed colleague, Moore, I just said there. You know, everybody in this council claims to be big, big labor people. You don't know the first thing about labor, let me tell you. Because labor is all about seniority, okay? Seniority means everything. It's not about, oh, who's getting their fair share and equity and this and that. Seniority means everything, your vacation picks, your assignments, everything. That's what labor is about. I know we're not a labor organization, but I'm just, I just know it. Probably 48 of you claim over here. And for the second most senior alderman, I don't like to play this game about the race card and everything, but the second most senior alderman who happens to be black. The 13th most senior alderman who happens to be white. The 15th most senior alderman who happens to be Hispanic, and the most senior Hispanic alderman, and the 16th most senior alderman, they don't have a committee. That's a travesty. If we're going to do 28 committees, which is also wrong, at least at the minimum, the top 21 people should have seniority. And that's all the way down from everybody that came on in 2011, 2015, and 2019. Everybody else after that, who came on after that, you don't have seniority. You know what? Someday, maybe the top five senior aldermen will be Hispanic. Maybe they'll be white again. I don't know what they are. Right now, the top five senior aldermen are black. Therefore, the top five should get to pick what they want, or they should have something. But I still, I'm not an apologist for them. He's equal friends of mine with many of the other black aldermen are. But for Anthony Beal or Ray Lopez not to get a committee, that is wrong, wrong, wrong. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
I move to lay this matter on the table and ask for a roll call vote.
There is a request to lay this on the table via a roll call vote. If you vote yes, this matter will be laid on the table. If you vote no, this matter will not be laid on the table and it will proceed to the roll call vote that Chairman Harris already called for. So a yes vote is to lay it on the table, a no vote is not to lay it on the table. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
The voting is now open. Please cast your vote. If you have any issues with your login or iPad, please raise your hand. The voting is now open. I will now take a voice vote. Alderman Slaski Garza, not here. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor? Are you voting? Okay. Alderman Tunny is not here. The voting is now closed.
The yeas are 11, the nays are 33. The motion to lay it on the table fails. Ladies and gentlemen, there's a pending roll call vote on the resolution to adopt council committee chairs for the 2023-2027 term. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
The roll, the voting is now open. Please use your devices to cast your vote. The voting is now open. If you have trouble with your login or devices, please raise your hand. I will now take a voice vote. If you have not voted. Alderman Sawyer. Are you casting now, Alderman? Okay. Alderman Slaski Garza, not present. Alderman Mitz. Not present. Oh, Alderman Mitz. Oh. Alderman Mitz, your vote? Alderman Mitz is a yes. Alderman Tunny, not present. The voting is now closed.
The yeas are 33, the nays are 11. The motion, the resolution passes. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsider... The chair recognizes Alderwoman King.
Don't you need 34?
No.
No?
Be 34 to suspend the rules? You need a simple majority to pass. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
Any, all those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Harris.
President, that concludes all business for today.
All right, Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move that there's no further business for the body that we adjourn by the same roll call vote applied as to Chairman Quin.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. This meeting is adjourned.